Good evening. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the March 2024 Hoboken Board of Education Meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you're joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the sign-up sheets located at the podium down in front. Ms. Good, can you please read the Statement of Compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 5th, 2024, which was our annual notice. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV, Channel 77, and files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cellphone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting and if use of the device is necessary. We ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Good, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Catamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delira?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Mr. Grana?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cluffel?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you so much, Ms. Good. Tonight is my favorite meeting of the year, and I think I can say that on behalf of everybody who is up here. In addition to recognizing our Students of the Month for the month of February, we will also be recognizing our Governors, Teacher, and Educational Services Professionals of the Year. We are so proud and grateful for all of you. So for the recognition portion of the meeting, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez-Gomez.
Good evening, members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and students. Let me begin by wishing you all a happy Women's History Month. The theme this year is Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. As we celebrate Women's History Month in our classrooms and at home, we reflect upon the advances women have made, including increased earnings, educational attainment, and job opportunities. I want to thank all of the women on our Board of Education, our superintendent schools, the women who are educators and leaders, and those here with us today to honor our students. Now, while all of our board meetings are special, tonight is, as our president has shared, an extra special one. As... As we will be celebrating both our Students of the Month for the month of February and our Governors, Teachers, and Educational Services Professionals of the Year. Tonight, Hoboken Public Schools will have yet another reason to show off. We will begin by honoring our Students of the Month and then transition to our Governors' awardees in a seamless fashion. As always, I am honored to stand before you as our amazing principals come up to the podium and celebrate our students first and our staff later. In the words of Marva Collins, "Success doesn't come to you, you've got to go to it." Please give us your attention as we celebrate our students and all of their hard work, their dedication, and their desire, to simply put, "Go to it." We will begin the recognition with Joseph F. Brandt's Principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will... He will celebrate his selection at the podium and will then introduce the Connors' Principal, Ms. Addy. She will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principal Shannon of Wallace Elementary, Principal Sorafin of Hoboken Middle School, and Principal Pica Pietra of Hoboken High School. Once the students have been honored, I will come back up to the podium, share brief comments, and then each principal will return to share thoughts on their school's Governors' awardees. As the children will take pictures, so will the adults. They will receive... The Governors' awardees will receive their awards and flowers and will stand by for pictures with their administrator and families. With that, I will ask the Principal of the Joseph F. Brandt School, Charles Bartlett, to please join me at the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez-Gomez. Good evening, Dr. Johnson and members of the Board, and our guests tonight. At this time, I would like to ask Emerson Marsh to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Emerson Marsh, our Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for February 2024. Emerson was nominated by his fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Rismeyer. Ms. Rismeyer said, "Emerson is a diligent and kind-hearted student who cares deeply about his role in the classroom. He is a role model consistently demonstrating commitment to growing as a learner and community member. Emerson is so deserving of this award. The growth he has shown since September, both academically and socially, is commendable. He puts everything into everything he does. He has an extremely kind heart and is funny and is simply a good person. I couldn't agree more. Emerson is one of the students I've had the privilege of watching grow and mature over my time at Brandt. To say he has grown by leaps and bounds is an understatement, and I cannot be more proud of him for exhibiting maturity and social, emotional, and academic growth. Emerson is a straight A student, constantly striving to do better. He's been awarded the Principals Award, which means he got straight As at our school pep rallies. He pays close attention to lessons and often shares his insight. Emerson brings so much to the table at Brandt. Not only does he care about academics, but he also takes special interest in being the best version of himself. He leads by example. The skills he have... he has will prove useful in years to come. Emerson loves video games, exploring outside, rocks and sea glass, basketball and soccer. He especially loves Legos. Emerson wants to become a Lego designer, creating new pieces and sets. He loves that you can make an entire creation out of little plastic boxes. When told he would be honored as Student of the Month, Emerson said, "Our school is really good. We work hard and try our best and do what we can to make others feel good and try to be our best selves. This honor is really great for me. My mind is blown that I got picked, but I'm not surprised since I know who I am, but there are so many other people who could have been chosen. We admire your confidence and belief in yourself, Emerson, and it's been a pleasure to watch you develop over the years. Please join me in a round of applause for Emerson Marsh, our Brandt School Student of the Month." At this time, I would like to call to the podium the Principal of the Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addy.
We are first going to recognize our January Student of the Month as he was not able to come to the last Board of Ed meeting. At this time, I would like to call up Kiran Cross, the Connors Student of the Month for January. Kiran Cross is a fifth grader in Ms. Lauren Schulte's homeroom class. Ms. Schulte shared that Kiran is a star student in class. He is always focused on his classwork and strives to always do his best. When Kiran is confused about something or wants to know more about a topic, he is not afraid to speak up and ask questions. He treats others with respect and is a role model for his peers. Academically, Kiran is meeting and exceeding all expectations. Whenever Kiran learns a new concept, he is ready and prepared to participate and ask questions in order to get a clear understanding of the topics presented. Kiran takes all of his assignments seriously and always wants to do his best while pushing past his goals. Kiran is a thoughtful and caring student to his teachers and friends. He is respectful and follows all classroom and school rules. Kiran treats everyone kindly and makes others feel welcome and included. Kiran shared that when he grows up, he wants to be a lawyer. He said that he really enjoyed the mock trial last year in fourth grade. Not counting gym, recess, or lunch, his favorite subjects are math and cryptology and CTY. His favorite book series is A Diary of a Wimpy Kid because it's funny and entertaining. His favorite book that he read in school is BFG because he loved the idea that the giants are a secret. Outside of school, Kiran is on the Hoboken United Soccer Team and plays the right-back defensive position. He plays dementia in the Harry Potter theater production and has had the theater bug since kindergarten. One of the fa... one of his favorite parts of Connors is that it's super diverse and that he has friends at school from all over the world. He shared that he loves all of the students and teachers. Kiran shared that he's going to miss the small-feel vibe of Connors and the closeness he has with his teachers, but he's looking forward to making additional friends when he goes on to middle school. His mom and dad are so proud that Kiran is such a caring person and that he wants to make a difference in people's lives and really help people. For example, last night, when his friends lost a basketball game, he wanted to come up with an idea to cheer up his classmates, so he decided to make treat bags for all of them. He is such an amazing big brother to Sagan and loves and cares for him so much. His level of empathy is top-notch and always wants to be there for everyone. Kiran truly has all of the koalities of a Connors koala. We are so proud of you, Kiran, and we will miss you when you move on to middle school. Can everyone please join me in a round of applause to congratulate Kiran Cross, the Connors District Student of the Month for January? Did LaMaya Co. come? If she comes back, we're going to do hers in a little bit. At this time, I would like to call up the Wallace Principal, Mr. Martin Shannon.
Good evening. We're here tonight to celebrate Lucas Garzone, our Wallace School Student of the Month for February 2024. Lucas was nominated by his pre-K teacher, Mrs. Facilino, who describes Lucas as a student who has shown tremendous growth since September, not only academically but socially and emotionally as well. He is always willing to work, loves to try new things and learn, participates nicely in class, and is often seen helping other students with their backpacks or when they drop something, et cetera. Lucas is also improving on his speech and working hard to express himself more. Lucas is a sweet boy who is always smiling and happy. Rarely is he ever upset or disagreeing with other students. He's a great asset to the... to his classroom as well as the Wallace School as he is a role model and someone other students can look up to and emulate. As his principal, I appreciate his hard work, how he supports his friends, and his overall kindness. Being a Wildcat means not only being academically on point, but also to treat classmates, teachers, and staff with respect by valuing each as an individual, respecting differences, and appreciating the work that others do. Lucas's favorite thing in the whole wide world is Mickey Mouse. He absolutely adores anything Mickey-related. A fun fact about Lucas is that he has a brother Christian in Ms. Lanza's class, so he's always excited to see him on the playground or at dismissal. Ms. Diana, one of the classroom parrots, says, "He is very sweet. He loves to show us anything he brings into school, and he is very nice to the other students. He's also very good at cleaning up." Lucas is truly the epitome of a Wallace Wildcat. He is kind, he's determined, and a role model to all. And because of this, we are all so very proud of you. Let's hear it for Lucas, our Wallace School Student of the Month for February. I'd like to call back to the podium, Ms. Addy from Connors Elementary School.
At this time, I would like to call up LaMaya Co., the Connors Student of the Month for February. LaMaya Co. is a student in Ms. Arciero's fourth-grade homeroom. We cannot be more proud of LaMaya. Ms. Arciero shared that LaMaya is a determined, eager learner who comes to school ready to take on any challenge. LaMaya has really set an example this year for her classmates around her. When she is not the first one in the room volunteering to answer a question or the loudest voice leading the class through whole-group instruction, LaMaya is quietly putting in tremendous effort because she wants to be successful. LaMaya is a kind friend to those around her and will always be your biggest supporter and cheerleader. She knows how to put a smile on a friend's face or pick you up when you're feeling down. LaMaya has an incredible character and always has your back. LaMaya is a great friend to those around her and is loved by her classmates. LaMaya's friend Liam shared that she is a great friend and is fun to hang out with. Lynje shared that LaMaya helps me with my work and calls me 24/7. She is lovable. Kimberly shared that LaMaya is kind, beautiful, and helps people. When LaMaya grows up, she wants to be a firefighter or a police officer because she wants to save people's lives. LaMaya shared that her favorite thing about Connors is that she feels like it's a quiet place where she can focus. She shared that she loves her principal, teachers, and friends. She said that all the faculty and staff are warm and caring. She is also so proud of her reading progress. She said that when she transferred to Connors, she was struggling with reading, and now she absolutely loves reading. Her favorite book to read is Grumpy Monkey. Her favorite core novel is Wonder and can describe the personal... personality traits of every character in the book. Her mom shared that she is most proud of LaMaya's progress. She said that she now loves to read at home every day. She teaches her five-year-old brother Lamar everything she is learning at school. She loves cooking and helping in the kitchen at home. Her favorite hobby is baking cakes. She loves using math measurements that she learns at school for baking at home. LaMaya's caring heart that we see all the time at school carries over to her being an incredible citizen in the Hoboken community. Her mom shared that LaMaya is the first one to help any of the elderly in her building by holding the door for them and bringing in their groceries and giving them a friendly hello. We could not be more proud of you, LaMaya, and everything you have accomplished this year. You exhibit all of the character traits and koalities of a Connors koala. We are so excited to see you continue to soar, and we will be cheering you on every step along the way. Can everyone please join me in a round of applause for LaMaya Co.? At this time, I would like to call up Mr. Ryan Sorafin, Principal of the Middle School.
Good evening. Please welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for February, John P. Esposto. John is a sixth-grade student nominated by Ms. Jettie for his enthusiasm for learning and willingness to help others. John is respectful, courteous, and gives 100% every day in class. John's math teacher, Mr. Zayas, describes John as a model student. John is punctual to class and starts his work right away. Mr. Zayas states, "I can always count on John to assist other students as needed and help others understand the concept being taught." Mr. Zayas also shares that John is studious and he knows the sky's the limit when it comes to his education. Our guidance counselor, Ms. Falcone, shares, "In the short time I have gotten to know John, I can tell he is an asset to Hoboken Middle School. He always has a smile on his face, motivates others, and says hello to his teachers and peers on a daily basis. These small actions leave a major and positive impact on our Tiger community. It is also evident that John's friend value... friends value his friendship. John's friend Alex shares that John is caring and is the first person we can go to when we need help. In civics, Ms. Eberhard describes John as highly engaged and motivated student. He is very helpful within the classroom, and I am thrilled that I have John as a student." Ms. Chekov also added that she shares that she can always count on John to have some of the most clever and creative vocabulary slides in the LA, which his peers enjoy. Ms. Chekov adds that John is extremely self-motivated and displays a maturity that is rare for children his age. His conscientious work ethic and exceptional character serve as an extraordinary model for his peers to follow. John is a member of the Hoboken Middle School Academic Team. He also enjoys soccer, lacrosse, and basketball. Mr. De Mayo shares that John is a great athlete and competitor, but also demonstrates phenomenal sportsmanship. He is always encouraging his teammates and wants what is best for the team. John is a pleasure to have in class, and I look forward to having John in FIZED in class in the next couple of years. When we asked John how he felt about receiving Student of the Month, John said, "It was very surprising because there are a bunch of other students in school who do as well as me." This alone demonstrates John's respect for his fellow Tigers at HMS. John, thank you for being such a great role model within our Tiger family. The impact you are making is truly admirable, and I look forward to watching you write your story. Please join me in celebrating John Esposto, Hoboken Middle School's February Student of the Month. At this time, I would like to call to the podium the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Robin Pica Pietra.
Good evening. Oscar Figueroa is Hoboken High School's February Student of the Month. He wasn't sure he could make it. I was hoping... being hopeful, but I want to share a little bit about Oscar. He joined Hoboken High School after moving in his sophomore year from Mexico. Each year, Oscar gets stronger and stronger as he prepares for graduation. Many students get a case of senioritis, but not Oscar as he had a GPA of 3.75 after the end of the first semester. Nominated by Mrs. Gleason, he stood out to her because he is continually helping other ESL students become acclimated to our building. Most recently, he attended the FAFSA night. His father could not be there, but Oscar was there, and he was the only student that came on his own accord and took notes throughout the meeting. Ms. Loughlin shared and put it best when she said that Oscar makes Hoboken High School a brighter and kinder place. He is always the first person to lend a hand. Students know that if they ever need a smile or a kind word, Oscar is the man. In the classroom, his curiosity and his humor make students feel comfortable and welcome, and he is a joy working with and being around. Ms. Lisa, his ELL teacher for the past two years, said Oscar has continually shown a strong willingness to learn and adapt. Academically, Oscar has continuously performed above average and has shown tremendous personal growth. He is active in extracurricular activities and has taken on leadership roles in the classroom and formed strong connections with his classmates. Mr. Fernandez, a man of very few words, shares that he has gotten to know Oscar pretty well over the last two years and can say this nomination is very well-deserved. Oscar is one of the friendliest students in the entire school and isn't afraid to strike up conversation with anyone because of his outgoing personality. I have seen him several times offer help to those in need, including myself, during the volleyball season. He is constantly involved with extracurricular activities and never makes any complaints or excuses for himself. He always has a positive outlook on life, and that is a quality that is going to help him succeed beyond his time at Hoboken High School. What will Oscar do next? Well, he has a lot to choose from. He has been accepted to Fairleigh Dickinson University, Felician, Georgian Court, Keene, St. Elizabeth, St. Peters, and William Patterson. He's undecided, but he has earned scholarship amounts totaling over $300,000 for the next four years. Great things will come to you, Oscar. Just continue being you. Congratulations.
At this time, we will move into our Governor' awardees. Our educators are truly at the core of all that we do and all that makes this school district not good but great. To have been nominated by your peers, students, families, and members of the community tells us that those being honored here this evening are exceptionally skilled, highly dedicated, experts of the content, who inspire students of all backgrounds to learn. They are collaborators, partners with colleagues, students and families, and they bring a strong culture of respect and success. They are leaders and innovators in educational activities in school and beyond. We admire them for that and for so much more. They are truly rock stars as they make all of the above seem effortless. The principal testimon... the principal's testimonies, and no doubt, once you hear them, you will be moved, will be coming up shortly. Again, with that being said, I would ask Principal Bartlett to join me at the podium for his first awardee.
Thanks again, Ms. Rodriguez-Gomez. I'd like to ask Mr. Andrew Mendez to join me up here at the podium. And I've just been informed by our awesome Assistant Superintendent of Schools, if you have homework to do or if you need to get to bed early, our students don't have to stick around, you can go. And before I begin my official remarks, I'm only used to seeing Andrew in his FIZED gear, but I gotta say, excellent choice on the waistcoat. It's a very good look. So with that being said, we gather here tonight to honor someone who embodies the essence of dedication, passion, and excellence in education. This individual has not only shaped the bodies of our students, but has also nurtured their minds and spirits. It is great pleasure that... it is with great pleasure that we recognize Mr. Andrew Mendez, a member of our Brandt School Physical Education Department, as our Teacher of the Year. Andrew is more than just a teacher. He's a mentor, a motivator, and a role model. He's a mentor, a motivator, and a role model. Every day, he inspires our students to push their limits, to embrace challenges, and to strive for greatness. Through his innovative teaching methods, well-planned and thought-out activities, and unwavering enthusiasm, Andrew is part of a team that transforms our gymnasium into a place of learning, growth, and empowerment. Through games like Cosmic Bowling, that's the Brand School take on laser light bowling, and Hungry Hungry Hippos, and I have to say, it's amazing what you can do with a handheld scooter and some laundry baskets, he helps create a culture in our gymnasium where students love physical education. Beyond the Brand Gymnasium, Andrew instills in our students the values of teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship. He teaches them not only how to win graciously, but how to lose with dignity, lessons that extend far beyond the playing field. This is exhibited by and large by our student athletes at Hoboken High School, where Andrew coaches during three seasons for cross-country, winter track, and spring track. Andrew goes above and beyond to support our students, whether it's through organizing activities, providing guidance and mentorship, or lending a compassionate ear. He embodies the spirit of care and dedication that defines our school community. He's a fixture at our early morning breakfast program. He's a fixture in the cafeteria and on the playground at lunch and recess, and he's an integral part of why our Field Day in June is one of the most organized and exciting events on our calendar. As we celebrate his achievements, let's also reflect on the profound influence Andrew's had on the lives of the children entrusted to the Hoboken School District. Tracing his career path all the way back to his early days as a paraprofessional, back in my early days as the Vice Principal at Wallace, and his time as a substitute on his way to becoming a certified staff member, Andrew's passion for education, commitment to excellence, and dedication to this community serve as an inspiration to us all, especially as he is a homegrown Hoboken Red Wing of the class of 2000. It's been an honor and privilege for me to watch him on his educational journey from the very start. Mr. Mendez, you are a teacher guiding our students toward a brighter future. On behalf of our entire school community, I extend my congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Thank you for your unwavering support and your endless inspiration. Here's to many more years shaping minds and bodies, building character, and making a difference in the lives of our students. Congratulations, Andrew. And at this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Elizabeth Pullman to come join me at the podium. And now we come together to celebrate an unsung hero of our school community. She may not always be in the spotlight, but her impact on the lives of our students is immeasurable. It's with great pride and gratitude that we recognize Mrs. Elizabeth Pullman, one of our esteemed kindergarten paraprofessionals, as our Educational Service Professional of the Year. In the bustling halls of our kindergarten classrooms, Liz is a pillar of support, kindness, and guidance. With boundless patience and endless compassion, she plays a vital role in laying the foundation for our students' academic and social development. As a paraprofessional, Liz wears many hats, from assisting with classroom activities to providing one-on-one support to students who need a little extra help, to getting the lunch orders ready, making sure homework goes home. Her dedication to ensuring that every child feels valued, supported, and included is truly remarkable. Her warmth and genuine care create a nurturing environment where our students can thrive and grow. She is especially adept at supporting Ms. Spidoro during instructional centers, and the manner she approaches that task is one of the underlying factors why the students entrusted to Homeroom 204 develop a love of school. Ms. Spidoro will be the first one to say that Liz is a tremendous factor in that classroom being a success. If my expectation of our kindergarten teaching staff is that they become the light and shining star of a child's school experience, paraprofessionals like Liz make the sky a more beautiful shade of blue for that light to shine. In that role as paraprofessional, Liz embodies empathy and patience. She inspires us to all approach our work through the mindset that even the smallest gestures can make a world of difference. Today, as we honor Liz for her outstanding contributions to our school community, let us also express our heartfelt gratitude for her tireless efforts, her dedication, and compassion. Mrs. Pullman, you are a part of the heart and soul of our kindergarten program, and your impact on the lives of our students is beyond measure. On behalf of our Brand School community, I extend my warmest congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Thank you for your selfless service to our students and their success, and congratulations on being named Brand School's Educational Service Professional of the Year. I'd like to welcome back to the podium Principal Juliana Addy of Connors Elementary School.
At this time, I'd like to call to the podium Ms. Cassidy Hall, the Connors Teacher of the Year. Ms. Hall has a big cheering section out there. Within the realms of our educational community, Ms. Hall stands as a beacon of excellence and inspiration. Her embodiment of rigor, relevance, and relationships illuminates the path for both her students and colleagues. Through her unparalleled dedication, she forges deep and meaningful connections with her students and their families. Ms. Hall radiates positivity, fostering an inclusive classroom environment rooted in genuine respect, warmth, care, and trust for every koala. By seamlessly integrating academic rigor with empathy and support, she empowers her students to achieve their highest potential, both academically and emotionally. As principal, it's my utmost priority to ensure that every classroom mirrors the nurturing environment that I would want for my own children. Ms. Hall's classroom transcends mere instruction. It encapsulates a realm of magic and wonder where learning is not just a task, but a captivating journey. Her unwavering commitment to her students' growth and success, as well as communication with parents, sets her apart as a true exemplar in the field of education. Some of the teachers at Connors shared, especially your cheering section back there, shared that Ms. Hall is so deserving of this award because she's so approachable, compassionate, and has an incredible loving demeanor. The warmth exuding from her captivating smile and the gentle inflection in her voice serves as an enchanting embrace for every Connors koala. She is every child's dream teacher and ideal educator, almost belonging in the pages of a magical Disney fairy tale storybook. If you know her, you know what I mean. Has anyone ever seen Ella Enchanted? Ms. Hall is Ella Enchanted in teacher form, a true teaching goddess, not only lighting up her entire classroom, but also the hallways of Connors Elementary School. One of her parents put together a video that they are going to give to Ms. Hall later tonight, and if you watch it, it's going to make you cry. It's so many of her students sharing so much of their positive feeling in your classroom. Your students truly adore you, and the impact you have on them is tremendous, and Ms. Hall, I am truly grateful for you. Please join me in a round of applause for Ms. Cassidy Hall.
Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Kelly Cofrancesco, the Educational Services Professional of the Year. Ms. Cofrancesco is a reading specialist at Connors. She has been instrumental in instilling a passion for reading amongst her students. Through her guidance, she has not only improved their reading skills, but has also alleviated any previous struggles that they may have had with reading. Formerly struggling readers are now able to delve into books and embark on exciting, imaginative adventures. Her dedication has transformed students who would read sometimes with tears into successful book enthusiasts. Ms. Cofrancesco transcends the role of a reading specialist. She embodies the essence of a reading leader at Connor School. It is because of Ms. Cofrancesco that reading has become a part of the heartbeat of Connors. While many educators may confine their focus to their specific students, Ms. Cofrancesco's vision extends beyond, encompassing the entire student body at Connors. Her dedication shines through as she meticulously records her Orton Gillingham OG lessons, serving as a guiding light for her fellow teachers to emulate best practices as they perfect their three-part trill, vowel tense series, and redword script. She gracefully led an engaging professional development session at Connors, skillfully immersing teachers from the perspective of students from kindergarten to fifth grade. All teachers, including those specialized in science and related arts, had the opportunity to experience what it was like to be a student progressing from kindergarten through fifth grade using the Orton Gillingham. This experience enhanced the pedagogical skills of all of our teachers, and we are truly grateful. Ms. Cofrancesco's commitment to student success is unwavering. She meticulously monitors the DRA, Developmental Reading Assessment, data of each student, collaborating with their teachers to identify those who would benefit most from RTI initiatives. As a pivotal member of our Interventions and Referral Services, INRS, team, she continuously pioneers new strategies to support every student on their educational journey, ensuring they receive the tailored interventions necessary for their success. Her demeanor exudes warmth, care, and calmness. She exhibits exceptional organization and attention to detail in all of her tasks. Ms. Cofrancesco consistently exceeds expectations in supporting students, teachers, parents, and administration, myself. Her influence stretches far and wide, permeating every corner of Connors. The ripple effect of her dedication and expertise is truly monumental, fostering a culture of continuous improvement that resonates throughout our entire school. And also, your students put together a video as well for you, and you see it, it's going to move you to tears. Again, everyone is just so gratefully appreciative. I'm incredibly grateful to you for your partnership, and you are so deserving of this award. I invite you to join me in congratulating Ms. Kelly Cofrancesco, our Educational Services Professional of the Year.
At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Martin Shannon, the Principal of Wallace.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the distinct honor and privilege of introducing an individual who exemplifies the very essence of dedication, passion, and excellence in the field of education. As we gather here to celebrate and acknowledge outstanding contributions to the Wallace School community, it is with great excitement that I present to you our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Benjamin Butler. Mr. Butler comes to us with a degree in Health and Physical Education and a Master's of Education in Kinesiology with a focus in adapted physical education from the University of Virginia. Mr. Butler embodies the spirit of inspiration, constantly challenging both himself and his students to reach new heights of achievement. In his gymnasium, Ben's enthusiasm is contagious, creating an atmosphere where learning is not just a task, but a thrilling adventure. Students under his guidance don't just absorb information, they engage with it, question it, and ultimately, they understand it at a new level. One of our parents had this to share about Mr. Butler. On a daily basis, Ben is the first person to greet every family as they make their way to drop off. His energy and enthusiasm help start each day off on the right foot as it is clear that he has built many special relationships with each of the students and their families. In the classroom, Ben brings an enormous amount of energy in teaching the kids a variety of sports and fitness skills, including weaving in important lessons to build a healthy and balanced lifestyle by incorporating his fitness work from outside of school. His compassion for the kids is evidenced in the way that he talks to them, teaches them, and guides them, and he wraps up each day by bringing the same level of excitement and energy to pick up. Beyond the curriculum, our Teacher of the Year has been a driving force behind numerous initiatives, whether it's organizing extracurricular activities, like his role as a strength and conditioning coach for the Hoboken High School, leading community projects like CrossFit Hoboken, or volunteering his time at a developmental sports camp for children who are visually impaired in Anchorage, Alaska. Mr. Butler has invested not only in academic excellence, but also in character and well-being of each and every student. But perhaps what truly sets Mr. Butler apart is his genuine care and concern he shows for every Wildcat. His gym is a haven of energy, encouragement, and empowerment. Students feel not only challenged, but also valued, understood, and respected. Mr. L. had this to say of Mr. Butler. "Ben was made to be a physical education teacher. His knowledge of the human anatomy shines tremendously, and his patience truly makes every one of his students feel not only comfortable, but confident as well. His energy creates an enticing classroom and motivates not only his students, but his colleagues as well. Let's express our deepest gratitude for the positive impact Mr. Butler has made on the lives, excuse me, of countless students and as a whole, the Wallace School community. Please join me in giving a warm round of applause to Ben Butler, our Teacher of the Year." Once again, it is my honor to stand before you tonight to introduce an individual who plays a pivotal role in the Wallace School community, a person whose dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment have earned them the title of Educational Service Professional of the Year. I present to you Ms. Juliana Santana. Our honoree has woven threads of support and encouragement, making an everlasting mark on the lives of those she touches. As we gather to celebrate her outstanding contributions, let me share a glimpse into the remarkable qualities that define this exceptional paraprofessional. First and foremost, Juliana possesses a genuine and boundless love for helping others. Every day, she brings not only expertise, but also warmth and understanding to her interactions with students, and all with an amazing smile, creating an environment where learning is not just a process, but a shared journey of growth. In the classroom, her impact is immeasurable. She provides invaluable assistance to the classroom teacher, ensuring that every student receives the attention and support that they need to thrive academically and emotionally at Wallace School. Whether it's helping to provide one-on-one assistance or fostering a sense of belonging, Juliana goes above and beyond to make positive difference. One parent commented, "You wish for someone to be kind, to have patience, and above all, love your child. Juliana surpassed all of my wishes as a parrot. When I think two years passed, I remember all the beautiful moments she helped create for my child." She is patient, loving... She is patient, loving, kind, funny, and a burst of sunshine. My son's face radiated with joy every morning when he saw her, and at dismissal, always had the biggest smile on his face. Ms. Centeno is a pillar of strength for both students and colleagues. Her ability to connect with individuals on a personal level creates a sense of trust and security, fostering an atmosphere where all Wildcats feel valued and supported. Ms. De Castro, Juliana's homeroom teacher, said, "Juliana contributes positively to the classroom environment, and the children adore her. She is nurturing and loving, and cares for all the students in her classroom. She is always willing to lend a helping hand in any way she can. Her smile and warm personality light up the classroom. We are lucky to have her." When Juliana learned of her appointment, she had this to say. "I feel fulfilled in my career path, and I come to work and leave work with a smile on my face. I am looking forward to continuing my work as a power professional and helping students reach their potential. I am lucky to have a job that makes me feel good and enables me to make a difference." Today, as we honor this outstanding power professional, let us express our deepest gratitude for the compassion, dedication, and positive influence she brings to Wallace School. Please join me in extending a heartfelt round of applause to Juliana Centeno, our E S P of the Year. At this time, I'd like to call Principal Sorfin, Hoboken Middle School, to the podium.
It is my honor to welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School's Governor's Educator of the Year, Ms. Emerald Rozmester, seventh-grade ELA teacher and much-mer-. Early on in my career, I had the pleasure of getting to know Emerald as one of my students at Hoboken High School. Even as a high school student, I saw the kindness, motivation, and drive in Emerald that has evolved into the master teacher that she is today. I am not only proud, but deeply moved by her remarkable dedication to her students and her unwavering pursuit of excellence in education. Ms. Rozmester's classroom is a sanctuary of learning, a place where every student feels not just accepted, but truly valued. Her exceptional classroom management skills create an environment where students thrive academically and develop a sense of respect for themselves and others. Her meticulous attention to detail, particularly in her students' weekly night rites, sets a standard of academic rigor that is both challenging and rewarding. Beyond her impressive academic achievements, Ms. Rozmester's impact extends far beyond the classroom. She is a beacon of positivity in our school community, always ready with a smile and a word of encouragement. Her involvement in extracurricular activities, such as the Sunshine Club, Fall Festival, HMS Bingo Night, demonstrate her commitment to the holistic development of her students and our school community. One of Ms. Rozmester's most remarkable qualities is her ability to inspire others. Her colleagues look to her for expertise in teaching and guidance in developing relationships. Her unwavering dedication to her students is an inspiration, Ms. Rozmester's ELA teammate, Ms. Painter, shares. "Since my first year at HMS, Ms. Rozmester has been someone I can rely on for everything. Emerald puts all others before herself, whether that be her students or her colleagues. When you walk into her room, her first question is always, 'Do you need anything?'" Whether it be help with planning, an air to listen, or a piece of chocolate, Emerald is always there when you need her. She is not just a teacher, but a mentor, a friend, and a true role model for all who have the privilege of knowing her. In the words of Maya Angelou, "I have learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Ms. Rozmester embodies this sentiment, imparting knowledge to her students and instilling in them a sense of confidence, kindness, and empathy that will stay with them long after they leave her classroom. Ms. Rozmester is more than just the Teacher of the Year. Her passion for teaching, her unwavering dedication to her students, and her commitment to making a positive impact on the lives of others makes her truly deserving of this honor. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Rozmester as Hoboken Middle School's Governor's Educator of the Year.
At this time, please welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School's Service Professional of the Year and good friend of mine, Mr. Tyrell Dorch.
This recognition is a testament to Mr. Dorch's unwavering dedication to our students and teachers, and his exceptional ability to connect with and inspire all those around him. I have had the pleasure of working with Tyrell throughout my career in Hoboken in various capacities. We have coached football together, collaborated on summer programs, and now, as part of our leadership team, he works to encourage, motivate, inspire our Hoboken Middle School Tigers. Despite his numerous accolades, high school All-American, and still recognized as one of the top five best running backs in the state of New Jersey, and earning a full scholarship to Michigan State, Mr. Dorch's true calling has always been to serve his community. His decision to return to Hoboken and become a firefighter was not enough for him. His decision to return to Hoboken, Tyrell became a support specialist and dedicated himself to our students for the betterment of our school. His selflessness and his desire to make a difference are evident. One of Mr. Dorch's most notable contributions in the leadership is the Leadership of Tiger Talks, a program designed to improve school climate by fostering open, honest communication among students. Through this initiative, Mr. Dorch has created a safe and inclusive environment where students feel heard and valued. These talks continue to reinforce the importance of students caring for one another regardless of their race, gender, culture, or socioeconomic background. In addition to his work with students, Mr. Dorch is also a pillar of support for our teachers. His willingness to lend a helping hand and his ability to lead by example make him a true role model for our entire school community. His colleagues all share the same sentiment. Mr. Dorch has an amazing ability to connect with our student body on a level that is uncanny. He holds students accountable while simultaneously treating them with respect. He is a positive role model for our students, and we are lucky to have him. One student who is twice as lucky is Amora, his daughter and an eighth-grade student here at Hoboken Middle School. Amora says, "His tough exterior is built out of love. He wants the students to do well, know right from wrong, and most of all, succeed. Not unlike the way he is as my dad. He instills a level of trust in me as his daughter, and I know I can always go to him, talk things out, and the other students feel the same way about him. I am proud to share my dad with all students at Hoboken Middle School. He makes us better." It is my honor to stand before all of you and share my gratitude to Mr. Dorch. He is more than deserving of the title of Governor's Educational Specialist of the Year. His passion, dedication, and unwavering commitment to our students and teachers make him an invaluable asset to our school. He is also a trusted friend who I can count on daily, and the words of Mr. Dorch, I'd like to simply say, "Thank you, my brother." Please join me in a round of applause as we congratulate Mr. Dorch on this well-deserved.
At this time, I would like to call up to the podium Ms. Robin Pique-Pedra, the Principal of Hoboken High School.
My Student of the Month came, so if you'll bear with me, I'd like to welcome our February Student of the Month, Oscar Figueroa. Oscar joined Hoboken High School after moving in his sophomore year from Mexico. Each year, Oscar gets stronger and stronger as he prepares for graduation. Many students get a case of senioritis, but not Oscar, as he had a GPA of 3.75 after the end of the first semester. Nominated by Mrs. Gleason, Oscar is constantly helping other ESL students become acclimated to our building. Most recently, he attended my FAFSA night. His father could not make it, and he was the student that came on his own accord and took notes throughout the meeting. Ms. Loughlin put it best when she said that Oscar makes Hoboken High School a brighter and kinder place. He is always the first person to lend a hand. Students know that if they ever need a smile or a kind word, Oscar is the man. In the classroom, his curiosity and humor makes students feel comfortable and welcome. It is a joy working with and being around Oscar. Ms. Lisa, his ESL teacher for the past few years, said Oscar has consistently shown a strong willingness to learn and adapt. Academically, Oscar has consistently performed above average and has shown tremendous personal growth. Oscar is active in extracurricular activities and has taken on leadership roles in the classroom and formed strong connections with his classmates. Mr. Fernandez, a man of few words, shared that he has gotten to know Oscar pretty well over the last few years and can say this nomination is well-deserved. Oscar is one of the friendliest students in the entire school and is not afraid to strike up a conversation with anyone because of his outgoing personality. I have seen him several times offer help to those in need, including myself during the volleyball season. He is constantly involved with co-curricular activities and never makes any complaints or excuses for himself. He is always positive on life, and that is a quality that is going to help him succeed beyond his time at Hoboken High School. We wonder what Oscar will do next? Well, he has a lot to choose from. He has been accepted to Fairleigh Dickinson University, Felician, Georgian Court, Keene, St. Elizabeth, St. Peters, and William Patterson. His scholarships are totaling around $300,000 for over the next four years. Great things will come to you, Oscar. Just continue being you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to welcome up Ms. Harry Delarosa, the whole family is here. Come over here, Ms. Delarosa. Ms. Delarosa has been an exceptionally skilled and dedicated educator in Hoboken High School since 2003. She has shown commitment to the educational profession in many ways, including achieving her MA, her literacy certification, and attending many professional development opportunities, including annual conferences of the American Council on the Teacher of Foreign Languages. She inspires students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn. She differentiates lessons and makes use of educational technology to bring game-based, engaged learning into the classroom with the programs Senor Woolly and Garbanzo. In addition, she organizes field trips to museums, cultural activities for her students. She was the founder of our Classroom Without Walls International Traffic Program to expose our students to places they might not otherwise encounter. I can only say I attended that last year in Ecuador, and every day, she would wake up looking like this. Every day, four hours sleep. Everyone else was hair on fire, no makeup. She was done up with the coffee at breakfast, every day, every day, and going through the airport with 40 kids and passports. I was shaking like a leaf, Ms. Delarosa, cool as a cucumber. She handles it well. She's doing the right thing. She has offered fundraisers to the students so they could overcome the financial difficulties which would normally make these experiences out of reach for some. Her own experience as an English-language learner upon immigrating to the United States from the Dominican Republic at age 12 gives her a very unique perspective on second language acquisition. Ms. Delarosa has brought in software programs mentioned above and shows how she demonstrates leaderships and innovation in and outside of the classroom. She piloted these with her students prior to COVID-19 pandemic, was able to quickly pivot to integrate in them in instruction. She has introduced classroom navalets for the students, recognizing that reading brings language learners to a high level of comprehension and leads to great affluency. In addition, she has initiated the Schools Chapter of the National Spanish Honor Society and has fostered its growth. She has been asked multiple times to write curriculum showing that she has the respect of the administration and her colleagues. Another way she has earned the respect is by serving as a lead teacher in the Passport for Learning Program at Brand School for several years. She is highly organized and is an excellent problem solver who can think on her feet, managing a very large student staff and vendor population daily. Within our schools, she has volunteered to be on so many committees, including our School Climate Committee. The fact that parents trust her to safely take their children out of the country demonstrates the respect and admiration she has from our parent community. She plays an active role in our community as well as our PTO. She participated in the statewide Amistad Commission Summer Curriculum Course. This course educated teachers about Black and New Jersey history to help them pioneer diversity, equity, and inclusion in public school systems across New Jersey. At the end of the course, they wrote part of the curriculum for the Amistad Commission of Education. In this way, she has had such an amazing impact on schools across New Jersey. I am really not quite sure where Ms. Delarosa gets the energy from. I am exhausted reading what she does. One other thing I would be remiss, she also piloted our Seal of Biliteracy. How many students did we have this year, Ms. Delarosa?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven students will be earning that at graduation. We are so proud of you. We cannot thank you enough for what you do. I can't think of anyone more deserving of this honor than you. We love you at Hoboken High. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Ms. Simone Braxton, Hoboken High School's Educational Specialist of the Year. I feel like Ms. Simone is not new to the high school, but somewhat new, and I'm really getting to learn how well-loved she is. I've seen it in the past few years, but hearing everyone here, I know she's really, really a special woman. Ms. Simone, I'm going to call you, because that's what everyone- Ms. Simone, I'm going to call you, because that's what everyone calls Ms. Simone, has been a dedicated paraprofessional educator in our school for several years, assigned to the students in our transition program. Her smile lights up the room, and she comes in with such a positive attitude, it's contagious. I often wonder if she ever has a bad day. She never tires and is always willing to go the extra mile. Whether she is walking our students to the W Hotel or supervising a student in another school, she does it all willingly and with a smile. She treats the students not only with respect, but with love. I can tell from the way she guides and directs them that she is committed to them achieving their highest potential. Her tone is consistently positive and encouraging in her interactions with them. Ms. Braxton is only not revered at Hoboken High School, but at the Passport to Learning Program, in which she works with third graders to complete homework in an engage-in-structured play. She brings those same high expectations to this population. She assists the students with understanding how to complete the homework and also shows excellent classroom management, devising systems to keep structure in place, from showing them how to place their backpacks on entering in to assigning groups for homeworks. She is a problem solver as well, and she's a collaborator. She works very closely with Dr. Carr, who is our supervisor of transition programs. She also is a collaborator in the after-school program. Someone shared that the students were having a hard time completing homework. She suggested we group the students differently and implemented a ticket system in which they needed to sit where she placed their ticket and that they needed to stay at their tables until the day's homework was ready for checking. Only then could they return their tickets and go to the structured play area. Ms. Simone is a Hoboken native and well-known in Hoboken. She was born and raised, so she has deep roots in this community. She knows many of our students' and colleagues' families, and I have heard her spoken about by families, staff, students, and administrators alike with fondness and admiration. The students' faces light up when they see her, and they cry, "Ms. Simone." She has a playful sensibility while always maintaining a professional demeanor. She volunteers with family members, collecting food for our Hoboken shelter. She attends many extracurricular events. Today, she was down at Dare to Dream with our transition students, and they did a presentation, and we were all the rage there for our work, and Ms. Simone is a big part of that. She is a huge part of the Hoboken High School community, the district community, and the community at large. She continues to grow as a huge part of our school. Ms. Simone, thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do. We love you.
We are so proud of you. We're going to take a two-minute break just to let anyone who has an early time to get up tomorrow to get moving, and we'll continue with the business portion of our meeting at 8:17. All right, we are going to get back to the business portion of our meeting. Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report? Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report? Then we will move into committee reports. For curriculum, we go to Mr. Granja.
Thank you, President. Okay, okay, good. The Curriculum Committee met on March 4th. In attendance were myself, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Katamatory, and Ms. McGurk. We have two items only on the action item tonight. That will be 9.01 and 9.02, both of which we recommend for approval. This is a... 9.01 is a partnership with Fairleigh Dickinson University for expanding professional development. We did this last year, and we have received a second round of funds. We recommend this continue. 9.02 is the approval of our field trips, which has been sent via link and PDF. So that is the action agenda. And the party continues in the other room. For the non-action agenda, a couple of things to bring to everyone's attention if you haven't seen it through some of the notes. CUSAC requires a review of ELA standards and math standards. We will be working on those through the summer, and those will be ready for the coming school year. We are doing three phases of high-impact tutoring that will take place during the day and some in the summer, and this will be for students that have always been identified to benefit from these programs. The dual-language information sessions, which have already been hosted, were packed. We had 70 attendees at each session. We've got about 175 interested families, and I think the committee talked about the fact that there was a lot of questions in the last year about were we ready to deliver a program of this innovation? Well, kudos to our administration for not only delivering it, but for having made it so successful that we would have this level of demand for people who are interested in participating. We will actually not be increasing the number of classrooms this year because, in candor, it's finances, logistics, and space that are some of the reasons, but the demand remains high. We've had our new parents' kindergarten kickoff. And then, just a little kudos for ourselves. For everybody knows, the Seal of Biliteracy is an award given by a school, school district, or state in recognition of students who've studied and attained proficiency in at least two or more languages by high school graduation. We started tracking this in 2017 with seven students in Spanish. This year, as you heard from the floor, we will have 37 high school students, and that will be in Spanish, Dutch, French, Portuguese, and Italian, Seals of Biliteracy. We can anticipate in the coming year both Chinese and Arabic. And that is the curriculum report for this evening. Thank you. Back to you, President.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. Now we'll move on to Facilities with Mr. Delatorre.
The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, March 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Delara, Mr. Granja, Mr. Gallegi, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. In addition, I did want to share a few other updates. Two more bathrooms will be updated in the next couple of weeks, bringing the total number of renovated restrooms to 41 across all our schools. Security doors for the top of the staircase at Connors have arrived, and will take four days to install. The installation will happen over spring break. Three custodian hires were made recently. Two will be going to Hoboken High School and the other to Brant. Their schedules will be Wednesday through Sunday. Because of the weekend work, we should see a decrease in our overtime expenses. Scaffolding here at HMS. Engineers recently tested the Hoboken Middle School structure and found no additional damage. Since the bridge work went up, no new stone has come off the building. Recently awarded SDA funds will be used to repair damage to the facade. Lastly, Energy Audit. The Hoboken Public School District will be participating in an energy audit over the next few months. Auditors from Schneider Electric will walk through every school building, and upon completion will give our district and each of our buildings a rating and recommendations to help us achieve savings on our utility bills. The main areas of focus will be lighting, boilers, and hot water heaters. PSCNG will cover 80% of the cost of the audit, and the district will pay the remaining 20%. However, we will be reimbursed via ISFunds. After one year of our previous audit, costs decreased by 23%. Thank you, and more to come.
Thank you, Mr. Delatorre. We'll now move on to Finance with Ms. Kana.
Sorry. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, March 7th at 10:00 a.m. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Angley, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. We reviewed and recommend Agenda Items 11.01 to 11.08 for approval, which includes tuition, technology, and transportation contracts. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kana. We'll now move on to Governance from Ms. Katamatory.
Good evening. My report won't be as short as Ms. Kana's. The Governance Committee met on Wednesday, March 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, and myself. The Committee discussed all agenda items and recommends all for approval. As is typical throughout the year, there are a number of appointments, resignations, leave requests, transfers, as well as terminations, increases, and approval of new substitutes. This month's agenda includes the following. A number of appointments for the current school year in 10.01, 10.03, 10.04, and 10.16. 10.02 covers the appointment of a dual-language teacher for the 24-25 school year. 10.05 covers the internal transfer of two teachers between Connors and Wallace. 10.06 covers the termination of employee. 10.07 covers the approval of an increase in salary for a teacher who has achieved a certificated milestone. 10.09 covers the approval of and rates for a certain Passport to Learning staff member. Changes will be retroactive to the beginning of calendar year 2024. 10.10 covers the approval of modification to three custodial staff to bring them up to current minimum wage, also retroactive. 10.11 and 10.12 covers the approval of various staff for our CST and ESY Summer 2024 programs. 10.13 covers the approval of ABA stipends and special education for two staff members. 10.14 covers approval of staff to be compensated for their time in connection with the district's Black History Month celebration. And 10.15 covers the approval of a leave request and modification of a previously approved leave request. As usual, 10.17 covers the... Not that it's always 10.17, but there's always the approval workshops, various workshops that our staff take throughout the year. 10.18 covers the approval of board goals discussed and agreed upon by the board as a whole as follows. One, the board will provide support and resources to the superintendent in the development of a new five-year strategic plan. Two, the board will provide the superintendent with support and resources for the district's annual goals with a focus on student achievement, including scheduled reviews of data dashboards. Three, the board will continue to improve communication both within the board and externally. Four, the board will conduct semi-annual meetings with the NJSBA to improve board performance. 10.19 covers changes to the current school year calendar to account for the snow day taken on February 13th. Specifically, our current last day of school is Tuesday, June 18th, with our typical half-day schedule beginning on Thursday and Friday, June 13th and June 14th. It should be noted that even without a makeup day for the snow day we took last month, we still meet the state-required 180 days in school. However, our contracts require 181 days in school, so we need to make up time for the lost day taken last month. Because June 19th is the Juneteenth national holiday, we obviously cannot and would not add that day and do not want to require our kids to come back for a half-day on June 20th. Accordingly, we propose that instead of adding a half-day on June 20th to make up the 181 days in school, we transform June 13th and 14th into full days to make up the time required under the contract and avoid extending the school year. The HEA has agreed to this change, and the current calendar will be changed to make both June 13th and June 14th full days for students and teachers. Section 10.20 seeks the approval of the calendar for school year 24-25 as attached to the agenda. There's one non-agenda item that we'd like to discuss, and that is, we want to report out on the current count for our school year 24-25 incoming kindergarten class based on the pre-K4 Transition Survey sent out to all families attending pre-K4 in the district. Note that this does not capture families who had their children in private preKs or other preKs around the city and were not in our district during pre-K4. 457 families responded. The responses are broken down basically as follows. 379 pre-K4 children-families indicate that they will affirmatively be attending kindergarten within the Hoboken Public School District. Only 52 pre-K4 families indicate that they will not be attending kindergarten in district, including 12 families that are moving out of Hoboken. 26 pre-K4 families indicate that they are not yet sure if they will attend district kindergarten or go elsewhere, with no indication of where the elsewhere is right now. Note the following connection with this information on incoming kindergarten families. The current 23-24 kindergarten enrollment is 344, meaning that our kindergarten population is likely to increase by at least 35 students. This is the lowest not-returning number from our pre-K4 transition to kindergarten since at least school year 2015, 2016, and the largest enrollment from that same period. In addition, I'd like to note that, as many of you may know, there was a demographic study done in 2021. That demographic study stated that, under two different formulas, that for the 24-25 school year, our kindergarten class would be 346 students to 350 students. We are outpacing that right now with what I stated was the 379 known kindergarten children that will be here next year. So just wanted to note that when you refer to that demographic study, we are outpacing that demographic study's projections, and that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. We now move on to Ms. Norwood for Wellness.
The Wellness Committee met on Wednesday, March 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Delara, and myself. There are two wellness items on the agenda, and the Committee unanimously recommends both for approval. Agenda Item 8.01 is approval of a try-op sports agreement with Weehawken High School and Secaucus High School for interscholastic ice hockey. As discussed during last month's meeting, this try-op arrangement will allow the team to practice at the ice rink in Secaucus, which should reduce program costs. Agenda Item 8.02 is acceptance of additional funding for the Financial Year 2024 School-Based Youth Services Grant. This additional $18,000 in state grant money increases the district's total school-based youth services grant for this school year to $301,306. This grant money funds a variety of mental health and wellness programs in Hoboken High School, including the program director, mental health clinician, and youth development specialists. The Committee also discussed a number of other items. As a reminder, in accordance with state law, school nurses are conducting health screenings for all fifth graders, including height, weight, blood pressure, hearing, vision, and scoliosis checks. Parents may opt their children out if they so choose. Also, thank you to Hoboken High School students Nick Petrazelli and Jordan Getz, who through the hearts of Hoboken Group, organized an inclusive Night at the Nest on Friday evening, March 1st. Jordan and Nick recruited students to run sports, games, and other fun activities for our Hoboken High School and Hoboken Middle School students with special needs. By all accounts, the event was a great success, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. I have a brief President's Report this evening. First, I want to say a massive congratulations to our teachers and staff who were recognized this evening. The impact you have on students and the school district is immeasurable. We appreciate your dedication, and we are grateful for your presence in this district. And I couldn't help but notice that, by my count, at least four of our recipients of awards this evening are Hoboken High School graduates, and I think that is amazing. I think it speaks to the culture that has been present in the school community for many years before any of us were sitting up here and that continues to grow under the stewardship of our current administration, principals, and teachers. And when you look at things like Read Across America Week last week, where Hoboken High School students were out in our elementary schools, reading with our students, I think that just really shines a light on the kind of diverse, inclusive community that is continuing to grow right here in Hoboken, so I couldn't be more proud. I wanted to encourage everyone to attend the Potions and Pasta fundraiser that's being held on Wednesday, March 27th at 5:00 p.m. at Hoboken High School. It is $10 for students and $15 for adults, and will include dinner. It is cash only, with tickets being sold at the door. It is cash only, with tickets being sold at the door, and there will be music, dancing, a magic show, and more. So if you're looking for a way to both feed and entertain your family, on March 27th, you can come out and support the Theater Department as they move forward with the North American pilot production of Harry Potter and the Cursed Child, the High School Edition. Those tickets will be on sale soon, and I encourage everyone to purchase them early as it is sure to sell out. And then, one last item of note before we go into public comments is that we will be meeting next Tuesday in order to approve our budget to be submitted to the county office. Time to be determined either 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. So next, we will go into public comments on agenda items. And as Ms. Good is getting the roster, I just want to give a quick reminder. Over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Vice President Angley will quietly motion with 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent.
Ms. Versace? Good evening, Roseanne Versace, Hoboken Wallace School Teacher. "I touch the future, I teach." This is a quote by Krista McAuliffe. I found this article from Southern Living Magazine, surprisingly enough, that very simply and eloquently describes teachers, and I'd like to dedicate it to this year's Governors, Educators, and Support Professionals of the Year. Teachers are called many things: educators, mentors, instructors, and sometimes accidentally mommy and daddy. I've been called both. No matter what they are called, we can all agree that they truly have a gift for influencing lives inside and outside of the classroom. Everyone can recall at least one special teacher, if not more, who has profoundly impacted their life. Teachers are the awe-inspiring rock stars of education. They work tirelessly to enrich the lives of the next generation. Their devotion, hard work, and eternal positivity never go unnoticed. Congratulations to this year's Teachers and Educational Support Professionals of the Year. We are so proud to call you our colleagues and to work side-by-side with you every day as we watch you touch the future. Thank you.
That's it, I'm sorry. Thank you. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Ms. Good, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Tegana?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Abstain on 10.03 and yes on everything else.
Abstain on what number, I'm sorry?
10.03.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Reyes. Some of you may know me as the Hoboken Housing Authority Board Chairwoman. Some of you may also know me as a HOPE's employee, but today here, I'm not here as either. I'm here as a parent and an advocate for my child... for my children. So, let me begin by saying, I have two children who have attended the Hoboken Middle School, and to date, I must say that this year has been the worst experience yet. Let me just back that up. I want to congratulate all the teachers that deserved those awards here today, but we have some that don't, and this is going to demonstrate that. The principal, Mr. Sorifin, of the Hoboken Middle School, has demonstrated unprofessionalism and disrespect towards me in more than one occasion. The last... the last being last week, when I was told I need to stop worrying about the other kids and worry about my kids, I responded by stating, "Oh, I do worry about my kids. I'm here, and I look for my children, and as a parent, I'm looking for my children to be treated equally as the other children." I reminded him that he failed to realize that in my community, whatever happens at the school is spoken outside, and I... I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses, and I'm a little... outside. And that he failed... oh wait. And that I was very aware of what was going on. I'm so sorry. Thank you. So sorry. She did a... I reminded him my kid... that my kids, I'm here and I look for my children to be treated equally as the other children. I reminded him that he failed to realize that in my community, what happens at the school is spoken outside, and I am very aware of what goes on, to which Mr. Sorifin responded, "Yeah, yeah, I know." My middle school 13-year-old son was present at the time of this conversation, and he actually responded to Mr. Sorifin by saying that he would not allow him to speak to me in that manner. Let's not ignore that as a parent, I have requested three HIB investigations since September, which to date, I neither have... either have been ignored, closed, all with no written determinations presented to myself or my children's father. The law in New Jersey states that the school has five school days from when the investigation is closed for the parents to receive a written determination of the investigation. The child I requested the investigation on began bathering my child on September of 2023, and all these emails collaborate this. And continued until a spitting incident that occurred on January 23rd of 2024. Today, my child, whom Mr. Sorifin holds no medical degree for, stated she was mentally unstable, is being homeschooled and currently suffering not only from ADHD, ODD, anxiety, but has now developed panic attacks, the first happening here at the Hoboken Middle School, and I was only notified three days later after it happened, and I was not notified by the administrator, I was notified by Ms. Valle, who is a counselor. Let's fast-forward to the current situation with my 13-year-old son, who was suspended last week from school for cursing at Ms. Anderson after being falsely accused of throwing a pencil. The teacher who emailed... the same teacher who emailed me a few weeks prior and stated that she was having an issue with my child in her class, but turns out that when I further asked questions, she was yelling at him, and he was not in his cla... in her class. He was actually going from one class to another. She also failed, when she notified me of the incident, to inform me that while she was yelling at my child, she clapped at him and stated, "I'm not the one." Where I come from in my community, this is considered a threat.
Ms. Reyes, you have 30 seconds.
I'm so sorry. As a parent, I am here to ask the board and the administrators, if this was your child, would you be okay? Where is the cultural sensitivity training these teachers should be receiving? I requested an investigation and also asked for my child to be removed from the class immediately when I became privy to information that Ms. Anderson pulled another child out of another class who was not present to discuss the situation with my son, and told that child that if he treated the child the same way for her, to please speak up. This teacher had demonstrated being biased towards my son and was trying to place whatever feeling she was feeling on my son onto the other student.
Ms. Reyes, that's five minutes.
I'm sorry?
That was your five minutes.
Okay. No problem. Yes.
Just for future reference... I don't know if this is on. Just for future reference, you know, you shared your remarks, and you tried to keep to a factual description, but it is best that you not identify personnel members within the school, and it's also best that you attempt to address these issues within the school and the chain of command.
I would have loved to do that. I have tried all of that. I have tried to meet with the administrators. I have emailed and CC'd the superintendent and everyone else, and I only got a response today, which was the board meeting. So this email would show you that what I'm saying is not. I have everything outlined. I have every... everything that I need, and the only reason I'm bringing it to your attention is because these are situations that you guys may not be privy to, and that do not know that happens. And yes, I'm... I'm an advocate in this community, but before I'm anything else, I'm a parent. And I feel that I have...
The time for public comment has concluded for you. I just wanted to give you that caution and that guidance and that suggestion for future comments, that you try to avoid using identifiers when you're describing these scenarios in this meeting.
I think, I mean, it's my intuition. I... I perfectly understand. Again, I'm sorry, I'm not able to give all the information, but I will relax and email to myself this information because I do intend to continue this. These are my children, they're disabled, they're special education children, and they're being treated differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. So we will be going into executive session now for the purposes of discovering, discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking action, so we will just be coming back to close the meeting. Will be approximately one hour, 45 minutes maybe. Do I have a motion? Do I have... Sheila? Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Good, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Tegana?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
It is 8:49.
All righty, it is 10:14 p.m., and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Good.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Tegana?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes. And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and have a good night.